I call the planning commission meeting for December 9th to order. We'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Excused.
Mr. Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting November 10th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
And the second was?
Okay.
You can't, no, you have to pick one.
My second.
Mr. Varga?
Second by Mr. Varga.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Epstein.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have three public hearings and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of that proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or if some people may just have questions and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a drive-up ATM facility at 9303 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Will you please come up and state your name and address for Joe and tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
How you guys doing tonight? My name's Kyle Forsythe. I'm with Kinley Horned Associates. My address is an office address or?
Office is fine.
3875 Embassy Parkway in Akron, Ohio.
For the record?
Yep, Forsythe.
Okay, thank you.
We're proposing here a single-lane drive-up ATM in the Walmart parking lot back in the, I think it's the southwest corner, if memory serves me correctly. We're going to be taking up approximately nine parking spaces.
Is that all?
Yes. It's a pretty small one.
Okay, is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this proposal? All right, this public hearing is closed and it's 7:02. Is there anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than the eight conditions noted which would be required to be met with the building permit issuance.
Thank you. You've read the staff report?
Yes, sir.
And you're okay with all the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Right around the corner from this, there's another ATM. Is that one going to be removed or?
I don't know. I don't think so. This is, this is a private client, so I don't know if the one around the corner is by the same client or not. It's Flight ATM. I can't comment on that, though. I don't know.
Do you know?
It's a credit union. It's completely independent. I don't.
But it's an ATM machine, correct?
It is. Yeah. Yeah, Cardinal, yeah, he's blowing up the picture there.
There's.
There isn't a limit in the code.
That's what I was going to say.
No, and it's just the discretion on how we view the site plan.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
I just have a question.
Mr. Varga.
It looks like you have five bollards to protect your equipment that's on the island that you're going to be building here. But there is some, there's a head bar and then there's a light pole. Do we think, and I'm open this up to response from the city, too, do we think we need to protect that end of the island with a couple of bollards? So that someone doesn't drive up and take that stuff out? The west end of the island? The bollards just protect, there's five of them, they kind of protect the equipment at the east end, but there's nothing protecting or visual to keep people from driving.
We are proposing another curb over there. There's currently not one there, just to separate, you know, the lane from parking versus the actual entrance lane and the.
No, no, I don't mean all the way over. I'm just talking about the island you have your equipment on.
Okay, oh.
There's nothing to protect the equipment on the west end of that.
I see what you're saying, so actually like in the middle of the entrance and exit lanes and the left side over the ATM will be placed. Okay, I understand that. We can certainly.
I just thought maybe you put a couple of bollards at that end just so that you can't, you can't miss the turn and drive, hit the island from the end.
Yeah, certainly. We can incorporate that.
That's all.
Can you be more specific, Mr. Vargas? If there's a light pole there from the west end.
Yeah, that's what I don't want people hitting. I mean, and there's some kind of proposed, what is that, head? Headache bar?
Headache bar.
Is that what it?
Yeah, it's, there's a canopy above all this as well to keep it protected from rain.
Clearance bar, I've never heard of this.
And it's like when you pull into a parking garage, so.
Okay, so the canopy, see, that was, actually, another question I had. I don't want to make a big thing out of this, but there's nothing, is there something that shows me where the canopy is and what it looks like?
Yeah, it's, it's on the page before what you're looking at.
Or that little, okay.
It's just, it's the overall footprint.
It's almost in the staple space. I see.
Correct.
All right, that's right, so it's limited, yeah. So I'm still suggesting a couple of bollards at the entrance end of the island just to protect people from driving, hitting the island.
Absolutely.
So that would be a ninth condition, addition of two bollards at the west end of the service island.
And do you want them prior to?
The equipment that's there, yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
Is there anything else from the commission? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with nine conditions?
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Have a good evening.
We have a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility, Panera Bread, at 7373 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
All right, tell us a little bit, please state your name and address for Joe.
My name's Kim Phillips with Phillips Mechanical Architects, 142 East Market Street, Warren, Ohio.
All right, because you have three agenda items, let's do them one at a time.
You bet.
So let's just talk about the conditional use permit for the drive-through. Tell us a little bit about that.
What we're interested in, as you know, we're requesting the construction of a new drive-through freestanding unit in and out parcel in the southwest corner of the current parking lot of Mennor East Plaza. We have a current in-line unit there, but want to bring the latest and greatest. Single-story, 3,800 square feet roughly. Double-lane drive-through, not double pickup lane, but a bypass lane, single lane. Outdoor patio. Going to have about 70 seats in. And it will be the second one of the newest, second one of the newest prototype.
Okay, speak a little bit more into the mic if you could.
Okay, sorry. It'll be the second, second unit of the newest prototype countrywide. And so we're asking for the conditional approval to be able to continue the process.
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed and it's 7:08. Kathy, could you, is there anything from the administration?
We have one condition, Mr. Chairman, that is that the planning commission reserve jurisdiction on the conditions of the plan related to the drive-through lane stacking and traffic to and from the restaurant.
Thank you. I got one question. Is this order on your app and pickup or is it order out of window?
Both.
Oh, both, yeah, both.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else from the commission members regarding the drive-through? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking Panera Bread at 7373 Mennor Avenue. Will you tell us a little bit about the dining and drinking?
Well, we do not serve any alcoholic beverages. The dining menu, as a lot of folks know, revolves around fast casual kind of sandwich menus, soups, et cetera. It is come in, grab your food, sit at your seat. There's no wagers, waitresses, that type of activity. Pretty much the operation of it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody here wishing to speak against us? This public hearing is closed and it's 7:10. Is there anything from the administration?
I would like to point out, Mr. Chairman, we didn't make, add this as a condition, but just something for consideration, there is no fencing shown around the patio. There are protective bollards a little bit further away on the other side of the landscape area. We typically see fencing, even if decorative fencing, around these outside dining areas. Administration would recommend it, but certainly defer to the preference of the commission.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members on the outside dining and/or drinking?
Well, the only comment I had was, and you just addressed it, which is, I'm looking at the, I guess this would be the architectural floor plan?
Mm-hmm.
And that is that someone will pick up their food and turn immediately at the corner of the building and drive right through the patio. So it needs to be protected on all three sides with bollards, the patio area, or some type of device to keep people from driving through the patio. Bollards.
Okay.
Is the bollards on a different plan, maybe?
The bollards are on the preliminary.
Let's see.
They're on the outside of the landscaped area, but they stop, they just, it's on the screen if you want to look there, too.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I would protect it on three sides, though. I mean, we usually protect these from cars acting erratically and missing the.
We can do that, and that shouldn't.
Just so that seated guests are not, you know, exposed to any kind of poor driving.
Understood.
It could be whatever you want to make them. They don't have to be steel bollards, it can be piers or, you know, something that works.
What would you like the condition to be?
Well, you kind of allude to it, and I was just reading it. It said that it's 54 inches.
Well, we have number three. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to it or if you're fine with that.
Okay, just add it to the three sides.
Additional side.
Three, additional, three sides of the patio. That would be the addition.
To protect the patio on three sides of that first sentence, okay.
Does that, just a clarification, if we've got bollards on three sides, which is not a problem?
Yeah.
And fencing?
Yeah, the fencing is a different issue.
Is this a decorative thing that you're looking for?
Decorative and to kind of contain the area. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to maintain the bollards on the outside of the landscaping, it's a little bit of a distance away from the patio area, just depending on where you want to put the bollards, or some restaurants have incorporated the bollards into the fencing, so it just depends on how you want to do it.
Yeah, and just to clarify for the ongoing discussions that we would have, the bench seating that you see along the front of that, those are affixed.
Okay.
I don't know whether that satisfy the fencing aspect. We've done fencing, we've triple layers of.
Well, what I think we don't want to see is just steel posts sticking out of the ground. We want you to incorporate that as a decorative design around.
That's fine.
Is that where, is that, yeah. So it doesn't look like you're tying up a boat.
Yeah, no, I get you.
Right.
Or a horse.
Right.
We can work our way through that to the satisfaction of the department, no problem, as we go through it and the building exterior comments that were made as well.
Okay. Is there anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for passage with the four conditions.
As amended?
As amended, yes. Amended condition number three, to include bollards on three sides.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Okay, you got one more. We have nothing in old business, in news business. We have a preliminary site plan of a restaurant, Panera Bread, 7373 Mennor Avenue. You tell us a little bit about the site plan.
I'll let my junior take over. Rich Cantanzrudi with Land Design, 9025 Osborne Drive, Mennor, Ohio. Going by the preliminary checklist from the City of Mennor, we've addressed all of the items, and I believe the site plan pretty much speaks for itself with including, even included the landscape design in the plan. I looked at the comments, we're, you know, we're going to be able to address all of them before we come back for final, so I'll entertain any questions anyone has.
All right, thanks. Kathy, is there anything from the administration?
No, other than the six conditions that we've noted.
Okay, there is one thing that's mentioned in the staff report that we'd like to see all four building elevations maintain a consistent finish, because of the way this is set out in these outlots, and we've come across this, these are becoming more and more popular. You have that, like the entrance way coming in, you have Mennor Avenue, and you see all those businesses on the north side. So your building is a four-sided building. So I agree with the staff report, and even though this is preliminary, when you come back for final, we, at least I would like to see all four sides brick, because you see it, it's a four-sided building.
Yeah, we've taken a look at a couple of different options, which, here as we.
Right, I understand it's preliminary.
Yeah. A little bit heavy on the IFIS, I would agree. And it's the prototypical building type thing, and we'll make adjustments with staff as we go through the process so that when we arrive, there's pretty much consensus of the design. That said, from Mennor Avenue's elevation, just a little caution, we're looking at a combination of materials, not just brick, because it turns it into just a big red wall then, and I don't think you guys.
It's more of a four-sided.
Correct, no, I understand. That and the service and west side, I guess.
Mr. Varga?
I think, you know, the focus on, I think it's what's referred to on the drawings as the west elevation.
Yeah.
The rear.
Yeah.
But of course, that's the elevation that you approach as you.
Correct.
You know, so I think all this amounts to is you have a variety of materials on the other three elevations, in fact, the south and the front east, but no one, you know, you only see that from coming from the east side. But you have a number of materials, number of finishes, textures, the like, we'd like to see that on the west elevation also.
Absolutely.
And one other issue that I don't think was in the comments, we require, and I see that you have a mechanical equipment screening on the roof. Because you look down at this building from Mennor Avenue, we would like to see that screening six inches or so above the equipment, so you may want to figure out your sightlines because we don't want you to waste all this time putting the screening around and then we still look right down and see all the equipment, so.
We're quite in a hole, so I don't know, you know.
I mean, just, you know, it's, I'm just bringing it up as a point of sensitivity and how the guidelines get applied, especially with this building from all four sides.
I know, difficult thing. I don't know exactly how high this baby is going to get, you know?
I understand, I understand, but we do, we do make those comments and those requirements of everybody else, so.
Yep, no, I agree. I agree.
Mike can always say, don't put a building in a hole.
What can I say?
That's all for me.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Haddon.
On the west side of the property, you have those steps going up, they're existing steps, but they go to nowhere. Is there, I mean, is there plans to eliminate those or at least provide a crosswalk for people like, you know, striping? I don't know who would be coming there to get into your building and then have to cross all this traffic and landscape and.
It's outside our official parcel line, so that would be something to be addressed with the ownership. I saw them as well, and I wondered why they were there to begin with, but.
And then the other question I have is the dumpster location. Are they going to be able to service that during your hours or it's going to be pickup at night or, because I don't know how they're going to back up in there without disturbing the traffic?
They'll front pickup, number one.
Oh, do they front, that's right, they front pickup.
And, yeah, we've got room to do it during business hours, but normally we don't encourage that because we don't like that.
You know, that just brings to mind another aspect of that, which is we don't want to look down into the dumpster.
Why didn't, why didn't I know that was coming?
I'm sorry.
We have you build a wall all the way around and self-closing gates, and then you stand there and you look and you can see the garbage in the dumpster.
Yeah, real difficult to lift the dumpsters up.
I understand, no, I understand, just think about the sightlines, that's all.
Don't build in a hole.
Kathy, I do have a question for you as well. Is there any concern with the traffic on Route 20, you know, going down that slope and hitting the building? Has the traffic engineer looked at that at all or?
I.
It's a steep slope, and I don't know if it's ever happened there, but.
It wasn't noted in the engineering comments, and it wasn't brought up during our internal meeting, so, you know, if there's something in particular, and I can raise it again when we get back to final site.
Car goes over that slope, they're right into that building, I mean.
I don't think it has yet, has it?
That's what we said. All right, I just.
Will now.
Was a concern.
You've jinxed it, you've jinxed it now.
Anything else from the fellow commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the six conditions.
I'll second. Mr. Perkovic?
Thank you. Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy holidays to all of you.
You, too. Amendments to Chapter 1165 Supplemental District Regulations and Chapter 1127 Definitions of the Mennor Code of Ordinances. Kathy, it's your show.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, these particular items have become quite popular as of late, and so the administration, I think everyone wanted us to address these pretty quickly. We looked at a few different options. Initially, we had slated this for just the commercial industrial district regulations. Spoke with Mr. Zeman, and we talked about the potential in the residential districts as well. So we opted to put them as a placeholder in Chapter 1165, which is supplemental district regulations, and to encompass the residential districts as well, because we felt that just about all of these items would be applicable to all districts. The only exception we made, which we added from what you've seen in the two prior proposals that you've seen, is we added item P, which basically says when proposed in a residential district, EV charging stations shall only be permitted for occupants or patrons of a lot on which the station is located and shall not be used for commercial purposes. So what we're thinking here is you have a multifamily complex, obviously that would be a potential location where an EV charger might be a good place to have, you know, especially if they don't have garages of their own or whatever, but we don't want to see that used for the rest of the public. The like would be, say, for a church, if they're the members of the parish or what have you, wanted to, say, utilize that while they were, you know, attending services, they could certainly do that. So that's why we indicated that there were some exceptions there. We also adjusted the branding and advertising on the charging station, basically just limiting it to manufacturing information. If you recall, when we had the one proposal from the bank, there was, there was a significant amount of basically signage, and what we're trying to do is just indicate, let's make it be for its purpose and that's it, let's not add signage to the site that aids to the main function of the site. So we've just limited it to just manufacturing information, that's our recommendation. I do have one point that it's not here, but I've had a couple of discussions internally. Item C, the EV charging station shall be located adjacent to the side or rear wall of the main building and shall not front on a public right-of-way. I think after the fact, we thought of a few instances and because of a couple of proposals that are forthcoming, that might pose, this might pose a problem with this restriction, if we could maybe add a clause that would say, the exception being if the charging stations were set back at least 200 feet from the right-of-way, then they could be located in front of the building. And the example being one of our bigger box stores, a Meyer, a Lowe's or something, and they obviously have a more substantial setback. You're not going to see them, and most of their parking lots are all just in the front. They don't, they don't, it doesn't wrap around the building in many cases, so without restricting it outright completely on those lots, we thought, well, let's add a little bit of a provision in here that gives some flexibility to those types of circumstances. Again, still achieving the same thing, you're not going to see it from the right-of-way if it's set back that far. Myers has some in their existing parking lot, and we did a measurement of their, where we estimate they are located, and they're at least 250 feet back from the street. You certainly can't see them. And I know the hospital's proposing some to be added to their, to their site, which you will see in the not-too-distant future, and they only have front parking, so, but theirs will be significantly set back. So if you are in agreement, I would like to add some language to that item C that would, again, this is a recommendation that would be going up to council, then, that we could then incorporate moving forward, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perkovic?
Kathy, with pertaining to C, again, would that be a provision, for example, distance you mentioned, but like some of the other things that we regulate in the city, would something like screening be appropriate at that point, too, if it was adequately screened, you know, with whatever, that could either be added to the distance requirement and/or in place of?
Certainly, I think if you added to it, are you saying, or in, not in lieu of the 200 feet, you're just saying in addition to?
Like one or the other, I would assume, just as a point of reference, some of the things that we review have a requirement that we will allow it if it's screened appropriately, so that could be one way to look at it, I think.
I don't think the administration was comfortable with it being too closer than the 200 feet. I certainly don't. I mean, if the commission feels otherwise, we can take it up to council however you'd like, but I think we felt that the distance was important.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm with that, too. Mr. Varga?
I have a question, and it's on that last one that you added P. Okay, so we have an apartment building or we have a condo development or something, and it says occupant, it can be used, limited to the occupants or patrons, so that would allow guests to use it?
Yes.
You know, someone coming to visit apartment or, you know, residence. Now, and I'm not trying to make this too complex.
Now, and I'm not trying to make this too complicated, but who's going to enforce that?
What?
I mean, is it, this now becomes, you know, somebody's calling the police all the time because somebody's charging their car and he doesn't know who it is? How's that going to work?
Joe?
You spend a tremendous amount of time enforcing codes. I don't expect this to be any more difficult than many of the codes. Very often, persons are grieved by certain behavior. So if I'm a resident of this apartment complex, and the building owner has decided to, you know, do a little side business, I'd probably motivate, and I can't charge my electric vehicle, and other residents can't charge their electric vehicles. You may have a situation where they're likely to complain about how management is actually operating the charging station. So part of it is, you know, complaint-based. Complaint-based reporting is often how many violations are reported to the city. Some of it's observational, of course. Some of it, and I don't know if it applies to this, very often, you know, you see advertising, be it someone's running a business out of their home. Very often, there's an electronic footprint for that, be it social media or other forms of advertising. So, you know, code enforcement is always on the lookout for things. They're extremely reactive when they do receive a complaint, and those things are appropriately followed up on. But I would suspect if you've got a charging station that's intended for, you know, private residential use and a multifamily, you know, complex, it would, you know, likely stick out if members of the general public are likewise using that facility. And if they are, and nobody complains about it, yes, frankly, it may go undetected. But again, that's the case with all of our laws.
No, I'm just trying to think about how some of these things are going to work. And this would not be a parking space. So someone would use this for charging, but they couldn't leave their car there all night?
I guess if they're charging. I mean, but it's only for EV charging.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, okay, so there's 24 units, and there's one charging station, and three people have cars, but one guy parks his car there every night, all night long, and they can't get a, you know, I'm just.
Again, again, it's, that's.
This is procedural rule for the.
Ultimately, it's private property, and I think if we're looking at the, you know, be it commercial, permitted commercial use or residential use, like any private property, those owners, the owners, the management, the tenants, they all have a vested interest in making sure that people aren't doing something violation of those rules. So there has to be some self-policing. Now, if management says, "Fine, first come, first served, you can keep your vehicle there all night, night charging," so be it. That's the deal they've entered into with their tenants.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to think this through. Like, I wouldn't want a situation to occur where the police are constantly involved with something new that they don't.
Well, again, unless there were a trespass, that's sort of a private.
Private management.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That, I understand.
That'd be similar to, say, a dumpster, you know?
Yes, yes. Who gets to use the dumpster?
Anything else from the commission members?
One more question. Mr. Crocker? I guess if it's, so you've got a private residence, right? And so, say, I have a one-car garage, and my wife and I both own an electric car, and one of the cars is in the garage being charged, and then the other one is out front, then that be not on the side or the rear of the building? So how do we address that? I mean, it would be, could you, could I not charge my car out in front of my garage if I had a condo and just like a one-car garage if I had to do it that way? I don't know if that's addressed in some way.
So you're saying a private residence and, say, the garage?
Or if you had a condo with a one-car garage, but then you had two cars, and you wanted to charge the second one out in front, that is not on the side or the rear of the building, you know, so you could only charge one spot, maybe? And I don't know the answer to that. I just was wondering if maybe we would amend something like that for private residence? I don't know.
Like, if you wanted to charge your car in front of the garage, because there's a car.
Right.
Could you mount one to the side of the garage, I mean, near the front, so you could?
I'm not as familiar with how these, you know, the individual chargers are used, I mean, other than the fact that they can just go in a normal outlet.
Right.
So, I mean, is it?
Some of them, yes.
I guess, is it possible to have more than one charger in your garage?
Yeah, well, if you had a single-car garage and you had two cars, I mean, that would be the thing. And I don't know. I'm just wondering how that would work in the future.
Well, do we make an exception for private residences?
I think private residences were something that, you know, on review of this, I don't know that there was a significant deep dive. I think the belief was, you know, these are going to be charging stations utilized by, you know, commercial enterprises. And then also recognizing that we've got some institutional uses in residential districts that may want to add parking spaces with charging stations, and then, of course, multifamily as well, where there may not be a garage, and it may not be convenient to basically plug it in at the end of the night. There's certainly, I think, you know, Director Mitchell and her staff did a tremendous job going through all the various contingencies and what I call in my business loophole management. But I don't think that necessarily today, we're going to be able to predict accurately in the future how this technology will develop. And I guarantee we can't predict how human behavior will respond to that technology. So this is absolutely something that's going to be, you know, utilized. I guess, again, this is quasi-professional opinion, I don't know what would motivate someone with a single-family detached home to construct a charging station in their front driveway. It would be expensive to do, I presume, to run conduit to it. The facility itself, the station, obviously, is going to cost thousands of dollars versus plugging it into the wall or adding some piece of equipment to allow for rapid charging within your garage. Now, maybe that's way off base, and in fact, the economics of this will be, or the use of this will be such that folks will actually want these charging stations in their driveways. That could happen. Will they be any more obtrusive than a basketball hoop? I don't know the answer to that. That's not a legal question. But I think that's where you start getting into the policy questions. Should they be allowed? What do they look like? Under what sort of circumstances? And that's where you start getting into, you know, sort of the nuts and bolts of planning and what looks good in terms of, you know, how a residential neighborhood looks and feels, and what's advantageous to maintain property values. A lot of, there's a lot of unknowns with this, and I think the commission, right now, can state that, you know, charging stations within the front building set back, you know, in a residential district, you know, shall not be permitted. You certainly can do that. I don't know that these necessarily specifically address that, and so that may be a bit of a regulatory void, at least in the short term.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Is there anything else? So this is just a motion to recommend approval to council, right?
Correct. Again, if the commission feels that there's some aspect of this which is, still needs to be touched upon, you know, certainly take a look at it either tonight or, you know, have a fresh look at some of the, I guess focusing on the single-family detached or, you know, that residential neighborhoods, I suppose.
Well, Kathy, you had some language for C, which I think that was the, one of the sticking points.
I have some language I put together, and I can throw it out there to see if you are in agreement. Joe, I actually wrote some of that down for you. So it would add, actually add to the end of the sentence, "Shall not front on a public right-of-way," and then adding the language, "Except when an EV charging station is set back at least 200 feet from the right-of-way line of the building frontage, it may be located in front of the main building."
Okay. I think it's good that we just get some regulation started because we're going to start seeing this.
Quickly.
Quickly, so. Go ahead, Mr. Varga.
I was just going to say, would these, as this applies to single-family housing, would this come under BZA authority to review on a case-by-case basis if it doesn't meet the?
Only if they're varying from the code.
But that's what I'm saying. You have a single-family house, and they've got an unusual situation. This becomes a BZA item, right?
Well, certainly, we don't want a rush of these either to the BZA. And I think to Mr. Zeeman's point, I think we kind of wait and see how this develops. Because we had talked about that, that we might want to say more about residential at some point, but for now, this was kind of a good starting point. And we were certainly seeing them more, and at least the proposals that we're hearing about are in the commercial areas and industrial areas, so.
I mean, other than that language for C, I mean, I speak for myself, I'm comfortable with moving forward on this, so.
You did see there's two items here. There's also the amendment to Section 112701 definitions. And that would only pertain if, which we could possibly anticipate this down the road, you have an EV charging station as its own station, like equivalent to a gas station. And so in that regard, we're just putting it under the definition of service station, which would then be subject to those guidelines.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question.
Sure.
Is there a limit to how many they can have on, like, multi-family? Any, every, you know, because they all have packs of those parking areas for guests and stuff. Is there any limit?
Well, we didn't want to put a number on it. We just, we use the term accessory, and, yeah, it can mean a lot of things. And again, that's something that if we feel like it's becoming a problem, we could readdress. But at least for the moment, what we're seeing doesn't seem to be out of control. We have another one that's coming to another gas station that's six or eight spaces, which you had seen one for sheets a couple of years ago, which was like three or four spaces. Right now, that still seems to be accessory. So we could certainly reevaluate if it becomes a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to recommend a council.
Sorry.